We are. We are recording.
Okay. Alright, so uh. Calling the meeting to order, uh let's do a quick roll call, so Ryan Hill, present.
Shabat present.
Cheryl's here, Ash.
Alright, uh approval of the agenda, does everyone have it?
Yeah, I move that we approve the meeting agenda for the township board, a ported township for May twentieth at uh twenty twenty five.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, okay?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh and approval of the minutes from April fifteenth, I don't see any issues in there.
I didn't see any.
Me neither. I motion we approve the minutes of April fifteenth, two thousand twenty five for the township board of the township board of Portage Township.
Right, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we will open up the room for public comment. Anyone online? No?
It's Alex Bowman.
Okay. Not seeing any, any public comments, so we'll go ahead and close up. Uh and new business.
Yep, so um just one resolution today and keep it ahead here. So this is the culmination of innuendo rumor discussion, side comments from various county officials, from the county surveyor to now county commissioners and to varying degrees of seriousness um that they were asking if the township would be interested in uh allowing the county transfer title of the ravine Portage Manor grounds uh to the township. Um I included uh the survey in here that I put up on the map, or I put up on the screen last time here on exactly what those grounds would look like, and I can do that in um if you guys would like, you'd have to just do it. I went ahead and, and it's been brought up in enough seriousness that uh I committed to folks, I did let folks know that the temperature of the board was cold on the idea um but that they were open to, you know, continuing the discussion and this sort of stuff, so I thought it would be an appropriate moment to go ahead and just have uh Alex put together a resolution of the board, basically expressing interest in accepting that property. Uh if you were to pass this today, there would be additional uh additional resolutions that would actually be passed for the um for the purposes of accepting that transfer, the county would have to uh pass an identical resolution with the township um et cetera, et cetera. But basically, this would be a, if it stops here, it stops here, and it can be picked up, the ball can be picked up again later, but it would give me something a little bit more of more to talk about than just the temperature of the board. This is a firm board decision on, on what your interest is in receiving this property. So that is why you have that resolution for you today.
Can we ask questions?
You can ask anything what you want.
Why would we take it? Tell me a reason why we need this property.
Like, is it to conserve, is it conservation, is it for a public space, is it just to hold it so the county doesn't have to pay for upkeep?
Oh well, good questions, you're directed, I, you know, that's your discussion, right? I have an opinion.
Okay, well.
Whole thing, but I think it's, it's very open-ended in the county. I don't think they care, I think they just are having a difficult time getting somebody to accept responsibility for it. It sounds like County Park has, the County Park's blown has refused, and apparently they have that authority to refuse.
Right.
So from my understanding is that they have refused.
Now, this is my theory, folks. If the county doesn't want it, or a county run agency doesn't want it, we don't want it.
I mean.
You know, me personally, I, I, I do. But, I mean, I'm gonna yes, I don't wanna say that I'm gonna vote with the board regardless, but it's just like, but there are questions, right? Like it's our taxes possibly, which are insurance responsibility. And though, you know, those are my questions, I can probably answer some of those.
Um it would have to be incorporated into our liability, no doubt, and there would be an effect there. Um I have as the office that would be responsible for maintaining it, that's where my concerns lie a bit, is I don't know if we have the bandwidth right now, this would be an expansion of services that were just it's, it's not so much an abandoned cemetery, which we can contract out for work for that, and that's what basically we are going to do. I mean, this would, I don't know, this is a lot of room, this is a lot of area, there's um, it's, there is a tendency for vagrancy in the area, homelessness in the area, kids playing down there, which is fine, but they could get hurt, what happens then? Do we, are we then tasked with the cleanup, you know, like if, if there is, if this is the site of encampments, we're in that split situation where are we hustling them out of there, and then you know, that's kind of a rough space to be in, and then there's gonna be cleanup involved in that, I know that Derek Dieter is out there pretty regularly having to clean it up, and he cares about this property a, a great deal, but this would be uh this would be a lift for this office. It's not something we couldn't do, but it would definitely be a lift. I, the timing is a concern for me.
I repeat my comment. It's county property, they need to find a county agency to take it over.
Oh, just to add to that, Cheryl, it could not, it likely could not be developed into many things.
Right.
It's rocky, it's really, it's very steep, I mean, there's not a lot.
To develop.
You'd be, you'd need to be innovative with what you were going to do out there, if we're going to do anything except for Zoe, yeah.
It costs money.
Oh.
Did they have an issue with dumping there, I wonder?
Uh, probably, I couldn't answer that, but there's a lot of, it's been a lot of things over the years, you know, there's structures out there that used to be, you know, various public structures that used to be some sort of utilities, drainage, you know, when you go out there, there's, there's a lot out there, I mean, when you're a kid that lives in the neighborhood, it's probably really fun uh to go out there and screw around, which I think a lot of folks grew up, grew up supported like Derek did, you know, they, they like to play out there. There's a lot out there. I've never even walked down, when I'm out there at the cemetery, this is well off of the beaten path.
I mean, I tend to think like at the moment I mean, we're already gonna be dealing with budget issues most likely with, until we know more about state cuts. I don't see any I don't see any real benefit in us taking it over, and I don't see what role will be that, like it would be different if they had some kind of idea on what they felt like we could do with it, but it sounds like they just wanna avoid maintenance costs.
I, that's not been said, but they, it certainly seems they just don't want, they don't want it on their plate anymore.
Yeah.
Well, I say we vote on it.
It can, you can, you use motion and second, or it can fail for lack of emotion and second.
Failed for lack of emotion.
Well, I mean, I think. Mohammed, I mean Mohammed seems favorable. So I don't wanna.
Yeah, but you know and a lot of y'all, and a lot of y'all uh know me outside of here, and be like, man, it's, it's not you're not a listener, but here at this point right now, I'm listening to God and all of the things that go along with this. I mean, I'm, I'm open to vote no, especially right now. Here's the thing about this resolution, though. The resolution is just so Jason has something to say. It's not that we are taking this over.
That, that's right, this would be, um yes, that's right, this isn't necessary, I just thought it, let's make it official on what the board's position is right now, that.
I think we should be official then. So I motion we vote on accepting the real property. Um that's, I think they call it the Riverside.
Yeah, there's no resolution number.
I'm sorry, it's uh whatever, it's put in the agenda.
Eleven.
Eleven.
That we vote on resolution eleven dash twenty twenty five, which we accept.
So a favorable passage of this would be you are interested in the property.
Yeah.
The township business.
So you want us to vote on accepting a resolution?
Um yeah, we either accept the revolution, which is we're accepting the property, or we don't accept the re- the resolution, that means we don't want the property.
So it can, you can motion and second, and then you can vote, and you could vote against it.
Yeah.
Although I don't know about these rules on voting against something you motioned for.
You just, yeah.
Alex?
That's good.
You can do that, no, that's uh, that votes, that's just procedural, so that's, you can, you can certainly motion and second for something and then vote against it.
Thanks, Alex. So you could do that, or it could just fail.
I think we, I think we should go on record how we feel.
Okay.
What do you think?
I'm good.
We go on record?
Yeah.
Okay. I motion that we vote on resolution eleven dash two oh two five.
That's okay.
I'm second to vote.
Okay.
Alright, all in favor of accepting resolution eleven dash twenty twenty five?
This is where you vote yea or nay, right?
Yeah.
Okay. No votes for yea, all in favor of all opposed to resolution eleven twenty twenty five?
Cheryl opposes.
Ryan opposes. So unanimous.
So we do have language, so we will have you sign this, and denote your vote on there.
Okay.
That'd be great. Good, thank you. Alright, I'm to have your things. I clearly failed to include, nope, here it is.
I saw it, yeah.
Uh community services agreement for New Day Intake Center. Um this is what Motel for Now is transforming into, and the process of transforming into. In full disclosure, I am on the board of New Day Intake Center, and there's several multiple people on the board here. They are in the middle of a capital campaign to complete their fundraising for buildings. Um their low barrier intake facility uh out of Old Cleveland Road uh which they're working with the city of South Bend, who has acquired that property and is in the process of transferring that property over to them. They have acquired a significant amount of that funding already, and um uh they're, they're looking to make that gap, they're looking for pledges um in order to um get the facility up and running. Um so what I have put before you for consideration is, instead of providing one payment to them to be, you know, a part of supporter of that project, uh this would be a commitment, a fire commitment for the township at two thousand dollars per year. So not only would it help with their capital campaign, but then would help with the operating costs uh moving forward. I think it's well justified in that this is a like service, this is a service we cannot provide as a township. I always say there's two categories of individuals that we have a great difficulty in helping people, one is the unsheltered. And that's, tells you something about the huge drop off when somebody becomes unsheltered on the amount of resources they need. So we are not well set up for doing that, and they're set up for doing that, the other one, as Cheryl is, as you know, is incarcerated, formerly incarcerated folk, we're not set up well to help those folks, so this would help one of those categories, this would support the organization that is helping one of those categories of individuals that it would seem to serve the township well, it would seem to serve our mission well.
Mm-hmm, housing.
Housing, that's right, yeah, providing shelter to folks who are unsheltered and support and wraparound services, so.
How did you come to the decision for that amount that you were looking for?
It seemed reasonable within, it seems in line with what our other community support tends to be, so that's, that was really, I dreamed it up just keeping in line with what the boards approved in the past. This would, uh, this would just be a five-year commitment that we'd make to them, and you know, they, they, they're raising millions, but I think it's a nice thing for them to see that the township is a partner right now, and in the next forty years, it's something that they can.
Right, and we can refer people to them.
A hundred percent, yeah, we already are, we work closely with them now, I mean, they're very full, as you can under, as you know, but we work with people in that space when we have folks come in here that are unsheltered, and you know, Sheila McCarthy's and Paul Hitler, who's not a member here, but obviously he's in that world, so.
Hmm.
That's what this is about.
Well, I had talked to Carl about this, because originally um people convicted of sex offenders were not be, gonna be able to get services. But my understanding now is they will be able to get services. And uh because that is a homeless population, they can't go to the center for the homeless, can't go to Hope, can't go to Dismuth, can't go to the Y, can't go to the center for the homeless.
Yeah.
Cause I have um one or two people I've worked with who in, who are basically homeless except for being able to go to motels for now.
Mm-hmm.
And uh so I think it's a good program now that they'll take sex offenders and uh, cause I was opposed to it up until then.
Mm-hmm. Is there any, do they come back with anything about how they would be using these funds?
Uh, I mean, it's operated, it's building a building and then operating, we, it's non-restricted. It's basically non-restricted, so, no, and I actually I, I just let them know that, that the board would be considering this, and they were just thrilled with, with that, and so, so.
It's a population we can't, we, we, we're not set up to help.
Aside from what the pantry or, you know, save a lot stuff and emergency, I mean, you know, I'll put, we'll put folks up in hotels for a few nights, but the chronically homeless, no, we, we're very, it's very difficult.
Okay, well, I like it. I mean, anything we can do to help these folks I'm on board, that's why we're here.
I think it's both monetary and symbolic, probably.
Um we also might consider in the future just doing a, something to raise supplies for them.
Great point, we actually have, Lana knows when we look at her, we've had those conversations with them of what they need, can we provide it, they're they're doing pretty well on, on collecting things, but they know that we're a phone call away, if they say we are out of bed sheets, or we are out of this thing, we basically told them that it, we're an open phone call for them, that they need to call us.
Also, I think we'll want them to know, but part, part of the goal is to move people out from there into their own housing. Now, some people can't do it because of health or mental illness, but some can, so I think they need to know, we're also here to help with work clothes, you know, steel toe boots.
Well, they have, they have really good programs for getting people into housing, and we've got some other partners uh for clothing, have you?
Dress for Success.
Yeah.
Oh yeah.
So they're on my.
She comes in here, she comes in here fairly regularly.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, that's working.
Yeah, yeah, she's come in here.
Okay.
So, yeah, so Ryan, and both your point, though, we, we, you know, we've got the partnership with Goodwill now. Um we can send folks to Meyer, Meyer if we needed to, but as far as clothing goes, that's pretty well taken care of.
Right, good.
It's usually, I find, it's usually the steel toe work boots, you know, I mean, we can get things I know I, the people I've worked with, we can get things from Goodwill, there's the Fig Leaf Boutique. Um there is a place on Portage, it's a dollar, it's just work clothes, like a lady gets a job and she's gotta have a black pair of pants and a white shirt, and you go to Goodwill and every white shirt has something on it, and therefore they can't wear it. So I, that's where I see us kinda playing a role, is helping with providing things um if someone gets a job they need, et cetera.
Yeah, one thing that's nice is, I mean, the personal touch that we provide is, we had a family that we've been helping pretty closely here that uh had a fire in their basement, and they own, they own, they own the house, and, but they didn't have insurance.
Mm-hmm.
You know, these people, he had savings, he had a thousand dollars, and so, I mean, it was one of those things Lana was prepared to, did the kids need clothes, I mean, she was prepared to go meet them out at Meyer and say, let's go load, load jack right now with what you need, and so it's nice, we're able, we're, we're trying to provide that need it right now sort of service.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems.
This is, I feel like it's like a good start here, it's a good start, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, any other comments?
Nothing for you to sign here if you approve it, but um being a community services, keeping it official is, is the best way to go.
Mm-hmm.
If the board's adamantly did not want the township supporting this, then it would not enter into the.
Well, I motioned that the township um I can't find wherever, oh, that the township enters into a community service agreement by providing two thousand a year to the New Day Intake Center.
For five years. Five years.
Huh?
For five years. So it's a five-year cut, yeah.
Oh, for five years.
I said. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Cheryl, aye.
Thank you, they'll be very excited. Um, oh, okay, that's it for the visit.
Okay, uh is there any other business?
I have no.
Okay, um, trust these reports?
I've got lots on.
Yeah.
Alright, um, starting with budget and assistance, so twenty twenty five bond update. Um thank you to Lana and all her hard words that the, um, everything is finalized now, and that actually just today, wire was received um for the twenty twenty five general obligation bond, and we immediately paid for the ambulance. That basically, we, they gave us on a handshake agreement, just was promising that we were gonna pay, so um it was money in, money out right away, so um no other requirements there, everything's pretty well squared away.
The ambulance ready to go then, or?
No. Still targeting for June. Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah, we need the uh state to come and inspect, so that's what they're waiting on there. Um Alex, I do have a funny joke for you on that one, we, those petition signatures. Uh Murphy didn't even look at them. It's like, I, I felt like you hardly looked at him, but it was no problem getting John Murphy's signature, we really just had to track him down. Um so I just got a funny note for you there, but uh everything else squared away on the bond.
Okay.
Um property inspections, I wanted to, uh, oh, well, let's go through the budget, real quick. Um let's see, you, you got your budget numbers in front of you now?
Mm-hmm.
Before I go through that. Um, nothing terribly notable here, Lana, unless there was anything you wanted to touch on. Uh I'm gonna get, pack out our assistance update here as well. Um nothing standing out uh majorly here, that's new from last time. I'm just gonna pass out the budget and assistance numbers here. As you can see, our April was right online with April of last year, actually, we were um almost right on. Um we served a fewer number of people than last year's April, here you go, Cheryl. But we did as much monetarily, so that's just sort of the ebb and flow of the office there, so but, you know, steadily increasing each month, and we're heading into our busiest months now, expecting uh June, July, and August to be some of our busiest months. Could answer any questions you might have there?
Have any people been coming in for help saying that they were laid off? I'm just curious.
Great question.
Where, where we're at? I mean, I know one factory.
My anxiety levels up, because you know I'm real.
Yeah, but I know one factory, they cut out their entire second shift.
Yeah, no, we have not had that necessarily yet, um but the food pantry has been steadily increasing. Um as you can see on here, the one thing I would note out for you is, we've hardly spent any money out of the food pantry budget. Um and that is because the community support we've gotten so far has just been so phenomenal. Um and that includes some um kinda major uh, look, go ahead, what, what, go ahead and talk about what donations we've gotten here lately, we got, we get uh Rotary has given us a thousand dollars, so we've decided not, so when a, when a thousand dollar contribution comes in for the food pantry, we're going to immediately purchase a thousand dollars worth of food on top of whatever we were gonna get anyway that month, so it's like, we can show that person that that organization, this is what you purchased for those folks out there. When you walked in out there, you saw that East Bank um market has just been a phenomenal partner, every Monday, we're getting fresh fruits, vegetables, things that are gonna go bad in a few days or close to expiring, it's getting to the point now where we just set that table out there, as you can see with baby food on there, that it's like, at any time, just come and make this stuff up, because um we need to offload it, so um done really well there on doing a lot without having to spend much money on it yet, even though we've got a healthy budget for it, so.
We also actually got a donation from Costco.
Yes.
They didn't even inform us, they just.
You know what, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you, that was from Tom Greit.
Was it?
He sent me a message, no name, photo credit, you're in Tom Greit.
Oh, okay.
CEO, he sent me, he texted me, he goes, hey, did you get my contribution? Hey, come out here a couple weeks ago, said Jason, I want to your food pantry, he says, okay, so Jamie met him out here, gave it to him, he's a real great guy, looked at it all, and then we didn't hear anything from him. So then this Costco delivery comes, and we were like, wow, that was really great, Costco sent us all these boxes of stuff, and Tom texts me, he said, hey, did you get, did you get my Costco delivery, and we're like, that was you, so many people do that, they'll send us something on Amazon.
Never their name.
We don't know.
They are their names, you don't know, I mean, and maybe they do wanna be anonymous, maybe they don't.
It's becoming very popular in the community, like, it's becoming the one people wanna support with their food drives and everything.
And our food bank is still pretty decently stocked and stuff, I think the, the big thing right now, we're.
Since we're on the, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, it's like cereal and peanut butter and jelly, cause there's a lot of staples, uh you know, for kids.
And with summer coming up, cereal, peanut, things with kids are gonna be home, like juice boxes that.
Yeah, that kinda stuff, too.
It's like, this is gonna be critical, because I, I just got an email from um the director for, kinda like the Food Bank Federation for Indiana. The program, they call it Sun Bucks, okay? Uh they're not doing it this summer, that was when they got extra for summer, for the number of kids you had.
Uh-huh.
And all because of the fact that they realize, I mean, I know there are schools where it's breakfast and lunch, not just lunch.
Mm-hmm.
And so many, especially low-income parents, they don't have to stress out so much, because the kid's gonna get breakfast, the kid's gonna get lunch, they just have to cover the weekends. And then I know over, um, it's not in our territory, but M and S school.
Oh, yeah.
If you go there on a Friday, you see these little kids going back like this, because they have backpacks full of food to get them through the weekend, like oatmeal and all, that's gonna be cut out.
Yeah.
And also, I mean, I see an increased use of pantries.
Yeah.
And all because at least last year, parents had that little extra, they don't have it this year.
Well, since COVID.
Well, we've been, as you know, we've been crawling before we can walk, or walking before we, crawling before we can walk. Uh but I mean, we may be getting to the point, then, we may be comfortable soon expanding our hours, being able to do more, our volunteer, we had Logan was in here today, Logan Center. So they're in here now and helping out, they bring a whole crew of, of adults with disabilities that come in and are able to work, and it's really fun. And then the summer, um we've got some kids who are gonna be out of school that are gonna come and spend some time here and that kinda stuff. I do, I have it later in the agenda, but I wanted to thank Ryan here, because we had a huge um number of contributions that came out of some efforts that he did, with the folks who were doing some protesting, and they wanted to collect uh things for our food bank, and it was, we had the whole lobby was full, they're doing it again, and we reached out to them and said, we need cereal, cereal goes quick.
I'm sorry, y'all, but uh, so, so Jen had these this donation of ramen news, I tried to eat it, she wouldn't let me eat it though.
Did you bring it?
Didn't let you eat it, did you bring it?
No, she wouldn't let me eat it, no, I did not, but I will.
I will.
Because she's the.
Ramen, you're on top.
She had her.
Top ramen?
To go to. It's in the cup.
Oh.
Yeah, the top, and you add the water.
That's a fancy ramen, we, we don't even have much of that.
No.
Yeah, we got the top ramen, we don't, we don't have that.
Yeah, she wouldn't let you get close to it.
Maybe I'll get a I'll get a cookbook on what you can do, and we'll just have.
Colin's working on that, yeah.
Yeah. But, I hate to say this, but in prison it's called slam.
Yeah, I've seen that.
And they, and those cookbooks have really good recipes.
I've seen that, and how they can do it from a commissary.
Oh, yeah, but what you can do with ramen noodles.
Yeah, that's easily the base.
Let me just get hot water and, and, and hot sauce, and I'm good, I don't need.
You don't need anything else.
I don't have it on here, but speaking of which, Nourish is starting up now, first class, official classes this week. And I believe, is it this week?
No.
It started June.
The first, I think, June.
But almost every class is already booked.
Yeah, I saw an ad for it, I'm like, oh, I'm sure that's too late.
Yeah.
Yeah, almost every single, I mean, all through, all through.
The summer, the first half, there's two divisions, yeah.
Real quick, though, something considering the issue of summer coming up with kids not being able to get food at schools. Are we tracking the zip codes for people?
Yeah, we have a very basic form that we ask them to fill out when they're here, and then it gets filed in a special place, and one of the things we require is the codes.
Well, one thing I was thinking about is, you know, I've been on it for a while about you know, trying to get information down to the street level for people coming in for assistance, so it's not appropriate for the pantry, but um thinking about it on neighborhood to neighborhood basis, like uh if we're getting more volunteers and we have more food, like doing a day in different neighborhoods.
Like go out, like take the food out?
Yeah, like if they're particularly focusing on places where we know there's a lot of kids getting food, a lot of free lunch.
That was the idea with the mobile market, yeah.
Um, I don't know, like, I mean, we're almost in summer, so it might be too late to put something together, but even if we.
What if it was around a community event that was already gonna happen? And we just came out there and we brought food, and that's what we were giving away, that's what we were doing.
I'm telling you something that I saw the other day.
If the NNN was having their arts cafe, we're gonna have a booth out there anyway, what if we had another booth that was like, this is just food, it's like food from the food bank.
So Medicine School, I happen to pass there all the time, especially in summertime, they are out there with their breakfast and lunch every morning. They have moved at least three of those uh concerts by the fountain to Liver Park. Right there by Medicine School, and it's right at lunchtime.
That might be an idea, to see, get the list of where the free lunches are, and they're usually in parks.
Sure.
And then maybe could, didn't, didn't we buy a truck?
Yeah, it hasn't arrived yet, but.
Okay, we could just load up, you know, what extras we have, and just go out to those places where they're doing the free lunches.
Yeah, absolutely.
I could, I'll get a list and send it to you.
Please, yeah, yeah, cause now that, I think the first several weeks was like get used to the idea, get used to a steady cadence of it, and I think we'll be ready to expand it.
Got a question now, are we doing anything like, I know the food bank, we have a food pantry at church, okay? We give out um toilet paper. We have some diapers for kids, and uh.
We have hygiene, and we have hygiene.
Okay, that's it, and laundry soap.
Oh, yeah, whatever we get, we, we give that out, we could walk in there here before you leave.
Okay, cause. Okay, cause maybe we ought to put out some requests for things like laundry soap, toilet paper.
Not a bad idea to keep that one rolling too.
And uh, because I only know of one paper pantry.
Toothbrushes, deodorants, you know, feminine hygiene products, yeah, we have that.
Okay, possible to do something to contact the schools and just.
Those programs.
Well, I mean, they know who their kids are who need help.
So actually, look, I got, oh, I got something for that. Yeah, later, so it's a great point.
Okay.
Well, we can come back to this, let me, we can all circle back to any of this. Um, a few things, because there's some stuff I really need the board's input on. I wanted to give you a quick update on property inspections. Every single property is now being inspected.
Okay.
That's, that's the cadence we're on and we're able to do that. Um, you know, we'll see when it gets fuzzier. Um, you know, but it's hasn't been too much of a workload thus far and. At first, we had a couple that were a little like, we didn't know how it was gonna go, but generally speaking, people have not had issue with it, because we thought they're gonna like have an issue with. What do you mean, I suddenly have to have property inspection, so.
Yeah, that losing their mind and Elkhart about.
Yeah, no, these folks have been very understanding. We have not, we've got minimal, I would call it minimal pushback.
That's a city, that's a city program in Elkhart.
Yeah, and then I reached out to Liz, uh, with the city. Who, you know, we communicated with beforehand to sort of start determining what kind of program we're gonna put together. And she just responded and said, I said, you know, we'd love to follow up with what we're learning and, cause they're kind of our stick, we're the carrot, you know, like, if you want this assistance. Do you want this rent check, you need to do these things. Um, so she responded that she's, you know, very open and we're setting up a meeting to. Go out and circle back with them and just compare notes, so really excited about the killing.
Have we had any units that had to have something done too?
Yeah, not yet. It's all been pretty reasonable. Yeah, so I'll let you know.
Well, I'm excited about that because, I mean.
It's just the level of accountability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice.
When we all do assistance, do you all check on the, so I have a friend here who's just going through. Whole bunch of stuff with a property owner who apparently had gas leaks and all these things and should not have been renting the property. But then they found out that the property also was categorized as a um. Uh, residence for the owner, not as a rental. I'm wondering, do we check on that?
No.
What's in our going now?
But we wouldn't.
The county's website.
Okay.
I mean, if it's gonna result in somebody getting kicked out, you know, man, keeping them in the houses, the goal, just ensuring its habitability.
Okay, I was just wondering about that. That that was kind of.
I mean, like if a.
We could, but it does work.
If a homeowner is scamming the system somehow, like, you know.
Yeah.
Same reason we don't want people to come in here that are felons or have warrants, we don't want them, and we we were, we were downstate. There were townships that were looking, people, searching people.
Yeah.
It's when they came in.
Yeah, I'm not gonna do that.
Call the cops, then keep them here, like.
Yeah, no, I'm not doing that.
That was one of the.
Like our mouths dropped and they're telling us the story. We call, we keep them waiting in there until the police show up, we're just like.
That was a big question I got at the library.
I bet.
He came in and asked, is there a warrant out for me?
Oh, yeah.
All right, you know, bench warrants, I'm sure and stuff, but uh, okay, so this is what.
Well, I mean, I got a quick question to go back to the um, this page.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so now the property inspector, I know what he does. Is the facility manager the one that's gonna clean here?
No, the facility manager is maintenance. He does maintenance at here, the three fire stations.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But he also is doing our property inspection.
Okay, thank you. So it's the same person, but he's coming at two different.
So basically, how his day sets up is he comes, we have a board over here that the caseworkers will fill out, they make appointments. For the property inspection, so he starts his day by saying what appointments he might have. I mean, sometimes they just do them on the fly.
Right.
And then whatever, he's got a plenty to list, basically, then he runs down and it's me.
Okay, so basically, it's the same person, but what he's doing is he's property inspection, he's keeping the place, all of our buildings up to. Enough cleaning wise, so it's not a separate person.
Not cleaning, no, it's not a separate person, it's a standard. It's more of um, maintenance, he fixes holes in the walls, minor things, you know, plumbing issues. He fixed the sink over the fire station.
Okay, got you.
Yeah, it's really nice, it saves us. I think it's gonna save us a lot.
One more question.
Yep.
Um, so this is one, so when we went on our tour last summer. This is one of those ideas we brought back, the iPad identification one was one that we brought back. What else did we bring next?
Well, I mean, we learned a lot about.
The one that I actually really heard about.
It was that Florence Southern Cop down in Delaware. By the way, I don't know if you guys saw the picture, that that. Community center had a lightning strike, she had a fire, Deb Driscoll did.
Oh, no.
It's a whole water tear, it's on her face, as you can see, it's thoroughly ruined, yeah, uh, look, yeah, it's really sad.
It's very sad.
Anyway, sorry to, but go check it out, send her a message, you know, love. Um, so we learned a lot about um, the property inspection from them. We actually learned a lot from the food pantry then, even though.
Yeah. They have a busy one, don't they?
Yeah, theirs is real bougie, you know, they do like online ordering and stuff, uh, but she doesn't have much assistance outside of that. So we learned a lot about that. We obviously learned a lot about the social security design need. And I'm gonna talk about that here, but, so, yeah.
I think it was a good trip.
Yeah, I want us to go to Fort Wayne next. There's a couple really great townships over there that are like us, that I think we can get a lot out of. So the Kokomo is a lot like us, and that Indy one is a lot like us, but this other one i- is gonna be a good one for us to visit.
Carmel's not like us.
Carmel's not. Good idea. They do cool stuff.
How much do you pay? What percentage do you pay on the um, mortgage? Oh, you pay all of the mortgage for two thousand or more dollars?
So.
Are you on a bus route?
What are those?
Oh, we don't have buses.
School uniforms, okay, school uniform.
Yeah.
The CROC, that's our big one. I have secured a donor for those again. So that is gonna cost minimal out of our pro, we will, we'll partner with them, we'll throw a little bit at it, but. That one, that's a big one, that's our big one. I got an eight thousand dollar donor that likes most of those uniforms.
Okay, here's my problem, I always have. One uniform doesn't.
No, they do two, it's two, okay, so that's at the CROC, but you're right. So they do two each, two sets each. Let me go through this whole thing.
Okay.
And then I'll throw it back to you. Now, the City of South Bend is back to wanting to do their. I wish Connor was here, but they, they tried, they.
That's the um, what's it, um.
It's their back to school event and it's really like, little information. They asked if we'd throw in a little bit on it last year and we committed to a couple of dollars and then they kind of presented us a check with an invoice for like fifteen and we were like. You said you were getting other people and then that fell apart and never happened. Well, they'd come back and said they wanna do it again, they wanna do school uniforms. Also, um, the McKinney Vento representative of at South Bend Schools. That is the person who works with kids who are either unsheltered or at risk for being unsheltered in South Bend School. Um, she has a little closet that she likes to store. School uniforms in as well, and so I told her to send us an invoice for uh, less than for a thousand dollars and we would buy them without her. A thousand dollars, that's where, it's, it's like specific, like she has like thirty families right now that she's, she's working with. So we've got the CROC Center one, so do you wanna do the City of South Bend one as well? And for how much?
Is it through the city or through the school corporation?
I'm trying to remember what the name of the.
It's confusing.
Or a separate nonprofit.
It's like somebody from the city, somebody from the schools. It's in a, they do that march.
Created a um.
Back to school march.
Oh, yeah. I know what you're talking about.
So Nita Davis is involved in it too, and she's a friend, and she's been, she texted me today and I said I was gonna talk about it with you guys. So I, we, we, I mean, we can do it, it's just, do you wanna do the third?
Okay.
Uniform thing, plus we give them.
Okay, now here's one of.
We'll buy them.
Let's see, um.
Wait, so he's got the CROC.
We got the CROC taken care of, that's our kind of big one.
Right.
Now, we're gonna buy them for the McKinney Vento of her kids, and I'll talk more about her in a minute, Sarah Nowicki.
Yeah.
I thought that was my store her frivol. She works for South Bend Schools, but she's what's called the McGinnity, it's a, it's a grant. It's a, she's called, you can look it up, the McKinney Vento program, and it's a federal program that she only works with. Uh, like she works closely with Carl Hitler, but she only works with.
Right.
Unsheltered kids or activists for it.
We would help out those.
So then on top of that, number three would be this other.
Third would be the City of South Bend slash.
No. No, that was a quick one. Okay, here's my thing, okay, um, I would. People double dip, you know, organization I do belong to does a black backpack, school supply giveaway.
Yeah.
And we know that people double dip. So you're gonna get people going both. To, okay, uh. Rock and both going to, I say, if we're gonna give money. Not, then take what you would give to the su- city and give to CROC. That's my thing, instead of having it here and here and here and here. I, cause I know our, my organization I belong to, we usually end up serving about two hundred kids. And for years, we've tried to figure out how we can all coordinate this, cause some people walk away with three backpacks.
As you recall, La Casa often does their own thing too, and it's often on the same day, and they also often ask if we will help. Provide school uniforms for that. It's driving me nuts, all the back to school stuff. Last year, it was brutal.
Right. And, yeah, that's, that, we need that and all, so people coordinate their times, their days. You know what I'm saying? Um, some people just give a backpack. My organization gives. Fran, backpack, glue, you know, so I think maybe we can, uh, now, look at me, we, like, I'm gonna do something, um.
Oh, you're gonna do something.
Take the lead in trying to coordinate this, cause I know that's something our organization.
It tends, I, I don't mind, I, of course, you, I, that was where I started too, but all of them. The CROC and the schools were gonna do it together, but then the CROC was playing praise music and South Bend Schools didn't like that, so they had, they wouldn't play praise music. And I was the guy in between, like, who cares about praise? Nobody's gonna complain, but, yeah, I, I can try, I can definitely try.
Well, I, okay, I motion, we put all of our school uniform money. Other than for this, this special McKinney program to the Salvation Army. So whatever you were gonna give to the school system, I say give to the Salvation Army, not the city.
Buying for that, okay. You guys agree?
I do, because I like the idea of, of putting it one place, than putting it in several different places.
Yeah, yeah, you would think.
Mm-hmm, only comment I have is last year, I ended up to some lady at Walmart taking. Uh, school supplies and all, cause she mentioned that. She went to CROC and they had the wrong uniform color. For her, her one school that her grandchild went to, they didn't have the colors of the shirts. So just make sure we've got the right colored shirts.
Okay, yeah, there, some of the schools do different, that's annoying, okay. All right, I know I got several things to want here, so um, thank you for your input on that. Um, so facilities, um, I've got a use agreement here for you guys, all of your edits were in here. Um, and then I wanna ask you about three forty Columbia. So all your edits in the Mathis use agreement are in here, so I just thought I would give it to you.
Sure.
Um, if you have further thoughts on it, let me know.
And this is still just exploring, this is not committing funds yet.
Well, no, I mean, we're good on, yeah, we're good on all that, so this would be the use agreement then. That we would sign this, and this is what gives the township access to use the lands and. Have events there and all that other kind of stuff.
What kind of events would we have there, maybe? Okay.
Whatever, you, you were talking about various things at the last meeting, so that's why we added it in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanted to make sure it was usable by other people other than just for base.
Your original, you originally budgeted five hundred thousand for a project like this, and then at one of the board meetings, you knocked it down to three hundred.
Is this, I would wonder that, is that still below with the cuts and everything?
Uh, well, we have the money. It doesn't come out of a future budget.
Okay, to belong to the little league that I know it costs.
I have to look at that.
Okay.
We talked about a scholarship program. We talked about a scholarship program.
That's what I was gonna say, I'd like to see a.
They're totally open to that, yep.
And uh, because a lot of, there'll be some parents in that area who cannot afford to pay what it costs to join and then to make the uniforms and the shoes.
Yeah, I think South Bend Cubs will be involved in that.
Okay.
But I can go back and I'll make sure.
Yeah, I'm, at least three or four scholarships.
Well, all your edits are in there, so if you have other thoughts, let me know. And then, um, three forty Columbia here, I kinda, Ryan, um, wanted to talk about that here, this building here. Where we paused the design and renovations was at the project planning, so we have the project planning document. Cause the board wants to go ahead and start moving forward then with design phase, that would be phase two.
I think at this point, we should be moving forward. We've put enough time in trying to work out things and it's.
Okay.
I am fully agree with it.
I guess I'm the one that's not.
Well, go ahead, what do you guys say, Cheryl?
I'd like to have the court thing finished and settled before we invest a lot of money into play.
Okay.
And uh, um, you know, my feeling is we should stay here and all. But since we've got a court thing, I think we should wait until the settlement of the court thing, which shouldn't. It's what, we're talking about maybe another couple of months before we know what the court's decision is gonna be, um.
I don't know, it could be six. Alex, any idea on if we could possibly estimate a timeline?
Always tough to say in litigation, um. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's really gonna be subject to the uh, the court's calendar and, and the positions that the parties take, so it's. Um, condemnations are traditionally on a, on an expedited, um. An expedited, not a docket, but an expedited pattern, I guess. Um, but that's, you know, that's by no means a guarantee when you get into litigation. Um, it could be three months, could be a year and a half, could be two.
That's why I would think we wait.
Yeah, exactly, and I don't think there's any reasonable situation where the courts were in favor of one government and any condemning another.
I agree.
I mean.
Well, we could stop at any time, I mean, too, we can move forward and then we can stop again.
And what would be involved in the next phase, Jason?
Uh, the design phase, but that's when the architects start coming in and they actually start putting pen to paper and they start. Um, we have a visioning document basically that says these are the space needs for here. And this is where they would actually come in and make the physical design, make the three D modeling, what the construction cost would be associated with that, I mean, it would ramp up significantly.
Do you think that would cost?
All, uh, I'm sorry.
And I think that's kind of what we need next.
It would be in the, it would be in the tens of thousands, if not hundred. I'd have to go back and look at the contract. We've already done two hundred and fifty thousand.
Would you put together um, just an estimate for us to look at and then we could?
I actually can forward you the original timeline documents that have it all listed out, you'll just have to then. It, it's clearly way out of whack now, but you can see how long that all takes.
Right.
And then we can, yeah, I can forward you all that though.
Well, and if needed, we can meet again.
Yeah.
Just as a.
Just for this.
Session to go ahead and get that going, but we need the cost estimates for us to.
Okay, I'll send it over to you. Um, okay, for facilities, I think that's it, Senior Center's going well, nothing, Sammy, anything, St. Joe Fire Territory, except for. Ambulance service is gonna be rolling out soon, which is a big deal, historical, so um, we're. Having conversations with the county on what that looks like on a, from a contract standpoint, because we're gonna be providing services to areas of the county that they were paying the City of South Bend to do. Um, and we're gonna be faster and closer, so um.
I did get to the long, the, the new uh, the open house at the.
Aren't they doing?
I heard it was good turnout out there.
Aren't they doing a separate open house? Cause that one was for something else.
So that was for the new fire station, that's Warren's Fire Station here, but there'll be an anticipated rollout of the ambulance service.
Okay.
Well, how could you ever make that? I couldn't make that.
Well, you know, when that one comes up, but that'll be soon, that'll be soon, cause that'd be historic, it's never been done before out there. Uh, but we're real excited for it, cause it's been a heavy lift, um. So that's it for the fire territory, and then, okay, a few items here. Um, we are providing support to Dismas House, thanks to, I tapped Cheryl on the shoulder and asked us how much support she wanted us to provide for Dismas and. On their operations, and she gave me a number of twenty five hundred dollars, so, which is on par with what we're providing, most, most folks.
And is gonna be used for clothing.
Yeah, that's right.
Because the problem and all that we run into is, um. Goodwill doesn't always have people's sizes.
Sure.
And uh, you know, I get a, I get a woman who wears a size thirty or thirty-two. It's hard to do, and I mean, I actually have people who come with just the clothes on their back.
Yeah.
And not to be funny, but at night, they wash out their underwear and hang it to dry till they have it the next day.
Yeah.
So.
So, yeah.
It'll be greatly appreciated.
Yep, Cheryl, and, and then I actually went over there and met with those folks at Dismiss House, we're, you know, we're getting a strong relationship with them, they're here in the neighborhood and they're just, they're great and they're. Wanting to support our efforts and, you know, they're asking how we can support theirs, and so we got a real good synergy going with those guys, um. YSB, same thing, uh, gonna provide support, probably a thousand dollar community support, um, payment to their operations again. Like-minded organization that's providing a service that we can't otherwise provide to, providing shelter to at-risk youth. As I mentioned before, the McKinney Vento, so this is a effort you're gonna hear about us now talking about. So she has like thirty families that are unsheltered and I chatted with her about, you know, and that's Cheryl, I kinda used your words here, that we've been loathe. To get into the school supplies business, because every teacher has their own requirements of what they want, but it's hard. So I, I wanted to be able to talk about ways we could provide support to these unsheltered kids, so here's the idea that we came up with. We'd like to do something like Coats for Kids, but it's not gonna be open to everybody. It's just going to be for those identified families, but we'll do the same thing. Though, the parents will have to fill out an application, Sarah said she can get a bus, we figured we're, we'll just take them out to Meyer. And we'll give, we'll, we'll, we'll set a dollar amount, you know, for them all, but just for these families, she'll get a bus, pick them all up from Hope and the places that they're staying. We'll meet them all at Meyer, we'll buy all their school supplies for the kids, so they go home. We won't publicize it, you know, like, we won't put it out there, but like, um, so we'll let the board know that it was kind of a cool thing we can do to help those kids.
I like that.
Yeah.
Mentioning this, for our food pantry, one of the things I'd like to see is, um, add. Is, I've had difficulty, I mean, I get it, but it's more expensive, when kids come in the middle of the school year.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, the two things that's really hard to get, one, we can solve possibly with uniforms. Okay, cause I had to just order uniforms for someone.
Sure.
And, uh, um, but pick up some school supplies, just, you know, the basics of the crans. And I can get you a list of what the basics are, and then we just put them out there, even a basic backpack.
Sure.
And then we put them out there, say. For people to take, say, in January, because that's when stuff, that's when the crans are gone, the markers are gone.
Yeah, we can make that part of the pantry, it's a good idea.
And, uh.
We'll add that.
Okay, we have to do, if I remember right, the reason we have to do Meyers is because it's in our township.
No, we could do anyone.
Can you do?
They're not, it's in German, but it's the closest big box.
Okay, do Walmart, they're much cheaper, please.
Oh, Walmart, okay.
Walmart, schools, I have to buy.
We have a really good relationship with Meyer up there.
Because I can tell you there's a huge price difference between, cause I, I buy for the club I belong to, I buy two thousand dollars worth of. Supply, the other place that is cheap is Menards.
Mm-hmm.
Their school supplies are.
Okay, well, we'll look at that.
Cool, okay.
But let's keep that on the old business side. Um, South Bend Pride Fest in Juneteenth, same day.
What?
Yeah.
We're gonna need some board support.
No, I know, cause I had to been to both for this one.
Okay, so we could talk about it.
Right.
And I'll send out emails, but it would be helpful if we.
Right, yeah, definitely.
I feel like we should be at both. No, no, so we're going to Memorial Day next. Every year. Okay, well, we need you to table with them. That means you gotta hover in an area.
Man, that is not my, you know, that is not my.
Next Monday, Memorial Day Parade, we're gonna have several apparatuses in it, along with a bunch of vehicles. Uh, Jamie's got all kinds of flags.
Are we gonna have the fire truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, fire truck, and you can ride, or you can ride in, uh, one of the.
Did somebody meet you tonight?
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, eight o'clock, need you out there.
Yeah.
Cheryl, call me and I can come pick you up.
Okay, where is that at?
The old Kmart parking lot.
Okay, I, yeah.
Area.
Yeah, that would be easier for me.
I think it is.
But the intersection there, Summit and Lombardi.
Okay, I know you're talking about, eight o'clock on Monday.
Yeah, that's when it kicks off, so get there. But if you need, I can come pick you up here or something.
Yeah, that might work for me, cause if I have to park and then walk a distance.
Or maybe even at your house, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Why did I read somewhere that it said Navar?
Well, it starts at Navar, it starts at Lombardi and Ford.
Okay. Okay, all right, all right.
So we're not the, what the library is, that's where.
Never mind.
But mine, uh, stretches back.
No, we all just usually park at the.
Well, I have to go get me some, look. It looks like a.
All right, my last thing's here is I just wanted to throw some kudos around a little bit, I gotta throw out Lana and Sam here. That were sort of through the startup phase for the fire territory now, implementing a self-funded insurance plan. Getting together all these, I mean, the title work, the, how many paperwork, how much, how many, I don't know how many IRS forms I've signed. Um, Sam sent me here, uh, getting, uh, physicals for forty firefighters. I mean, just, it's been a Herculean effort and they've just done a phenomenal job, we have not missed a beat. The residents out there are so happy, as Ryan can tell you out there, they were excited to come out and see the new station, they just, the firefighters are happy, everybody's very happy. So, thank you so much.
There's one guy from Indy complaining about the fire station, cause it's too nice.
I think you said somebody complained, cause it was too nice.
Yeah, cause they didn't have it down in Indy. They're not here, but I just wanna note Jamie and Connor, all their work on the food pantry nourish, all the great things that we just talked about. Our thanks to, uh, Jamie and Connor. Cheryl, I have to point out. So resident assistance, as always, every month you've got, you know, more than one person sent our way. But I just wanted to say, I really appreciated that email you sent, when you asked me, so Cheryl sends me an email and says, Jason. Uh, we've been talking about doing a social security designated program, have you hired someone for that or started doing that yet? And Lana will tell you that I said, oh shit, when I saw that email, because I just got done telling them, like. We can settle into this group, we've done a lot in a little amount of time, so I was terrified of how she was gonna respond when I said. That is, I responded back and said, that is the one thing we have not been able to implement yet, out of all these new initiatives. We just, the fire territory, the food pantry, senior center, and her response was totally understanding and that's not why she was asking, she sent me links. And she said, this will be the most complicated thing that the township does thus far, which is one hundred percent right. So I just wanted to say, I really appreciated that that was your approach with us, and I told her, I was just like. I thought she was gonna be like, we need to do it, and I'd be like, this is handling federal money from people. This, this is one of those, we've only do this new thing this year, so.
Yeah.
That will be next.
Yeah.
We just have not started yet, but I just wanted to note for you that as the administrator here, like, that is extraordinarily helpful.
Yeah, and I.
And she's got a bunch of links that were helpful.
Yeah.
I've been meeting with folks from Real Services and other places that did it, and that's when I was like, ooh, this is.
Yeah, it's very, I mean, I've been paves for people and. That was enough.
Can we talk to a couple of the townships last year when we were down there, they do the program in Kokomo and in Indy, one of the ones in Indy.
Yeah.
And it is an undertaking, cause it's more than just managing their money.
No, right, because you're gonna get all of the paperwork that says they need to renew all that, to get all their paperwork.
It's a lot.
It's.
And they'll be here every other day asking for money.
Well, that's my main, you gotta set up a very strict protocol and.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, agreed.
You'll give them money on, on mon- month, and I suggest do not give the money on the weekend.
Standpoint, what do you do when that person's on vacation?
Right.
You know, like, I mean, all that has been in place before.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, so, thank you, um. Um, Mohammed, thank you as always for your community assistance efforts, the, um, folks at Pop Warner, I coach now with Coach Kalume. Who's now starting his own thing, and he was, is very quick to tell me that how much they appreciated the support from Portage Township and would be, would be willing to do it again. And I said, we got this, Mohammed.
They did just start their.
Like, let's talk. So, um, but it's really, the kids are really great, they're really grateful, and they talked about what a great, um, experience it was for them to be able to go, and so. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
For sure.
Good chair, that's all I got, that was a lot.
I got one thing for others, I know we had talked about possibly doing something with Cultivate. Where are we on that?
We are not, we, we've been trying to, we, we are ordering food from them, so we are working with them now.
Okay.
The prepackaged meal thing, we haven't made progress on there.
Okay, fine.
I just wanna.
Really? Really?
Oh, wow.
Wrong lawyer.
No, I'm talk, I'm talking my questions into this device. And, uh, then here he comes in the door.
I did wanna mention on the, the pantry stuff, we, we did, oh, we raised four hundred pounds, I think.